The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Media Services, the City of Oshkosh, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to I am Oshkosh, Cheryl Henson, Dan Ryland's here, and very happy to welcome to the program a couple of folks who have been on many times in the past. Well, John, I'm not sure you so much, but...
Once, I think.
Yep, once, probably when you were running. But anyway, we're happy to have joining us this evening John Lumberger, President of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education, and seated next to him, Tom McDermott, the Vice President of that same school board. And obviously, we're going to talk about school board issues and school district issues. So, yeah, big surprise there, right?
Yeah. We're going to do a box of Bahamas or something.
Anyway, so thanks to both of you for being here.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you giving us the time this evening. And later on in the program, we're going to be joined by the incoming sheriff and the outgoing sheriff to have a little discussion with them. So, anyway, let's focus on school district issues. Of course, the biggest is the budget recently passed, 9% tax hike. I don't know. That seems steep. I know you guys have issues within the school district, but with the economy the way it is, do you think the district can support that 9% hike on top of what we're also going to see from the county, you know, the technical colleges, the city, what have you?
Well, we, you know, we set that trying to find, you know, we're still not at the allowable limit. So, we were trying to be sensitive to those issues and the economy and all that, while at the same time trying to get some much-needed work done in the district. And we're hoping that that's going to be a reasonable compromise between tax to the max and something less.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's interesting because in last year's spring election, the voters gave you guys the ability to, you know, we approved one portion of the referendum questions, referenda, and that didn't happen. So, on the one hand, the public is saying, okay, we can support this, but you didn't raise the money for that, trying to watch out for the taxpayer, and now we're getting hit with this. So, it's kind of, the way I'm looking at it, it's kind of a horse apiece, really. But I think you probably have a different opinion.
Well, first of all, what's the 9% for? Can you just kind of break that down? I think a lot of people don't know. What are you going to use the 9% for, increase?
Well, to cover our operating budget. And include, well, all the normal things that you have to pay for in order to operate a school district, including, you know, keeping the lights on, heating the buildings, paying our staff, and all the people that work for the district.
I understand.
Also included in that is the, sort of, the normal capital improvement budget that's around $800,000 to $900,000 for projects, plus an additional $1.3 million of additional projects. That's all included in that. We did not go to the revenue limit and actually had authority to go $1,300,000 above.
No, it was 13% rather than the 9%.
Yeah, it would have been 13% increase in the tax rate. That's the 9% increase in the tax rate that will apply to whatever value.
Are you getting negative comments from constituents? Do you get emails from people that are upset with you, or?
Well, I mean, I've gotten both sides.
Okay.
I've had people come up to me and say, you know, be brave and go for it because there's some advantage to taxing to the max. And, you know, I've had the other side where, you know, people have called and, you know, said, please, 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 please don't raise my taxes. So, I get kind of a mixed message from...
You too, Tom?
And I do too. And, you know, I had people last year and again this year talk about the fact that we're not making use of the referendum that was passed that would have allowed us to tax to the revenue limit plus that additional $1,300,000. And I think most people don't realize that when the state cut back their level of equalization aid for the district, in order to just go to the levels that we are taxing, we have been increasing the local levy more than we would have under the assumptions when that referendum was passed. So, the prediction was if things stayed the same, we would have increased the local levy, you know, a certain percentage with that extra $1,300,000. And in fact, when the state cut back, we increased the local levy more than that even though we weren't going to the revenue limit. So, that's why I felt it was pretty hard to say, no, we're going to go ahead and go to the revenue limit plus that $1,300,000, when the rules of the game had changed and the basic assumptions that people had when they voted for that had changed quite a bit.
You both would be up for reelection in April. Have either of you made up your mind whether you're going to run again?
I'm going to.
You're going to run?
Yeah.
Okay, Tom?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure. Being devil's advocate, John, you know, the election last week was for balanced budgets and fiscal responsibility. 9% will be hard to run on, don't you think?
Well, I'm going to run on school excellence. I think that, you know, the economy is bad. And I remember when I first ran, I was saying, look, you know, we're going into hard economic times and some of the programs and projects that the board was projecting doing, I think there was like $70 million of stuff, I said, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. And it turned out I was right about that. We're going to need to become smart about how we do things. And I think that one of the things that I want to run on is this sort of long-term strategic plan that our new superintendent, Don Vigot, has been talking about. And within that kind of a strategic plan, we need to build sustainability. I think our, you know, if you look at our tax levy, and Tom here knows, he's got more history with it, but it kind of has gone up and down historically. We need to smooth that out so we don't have to deal with, you know, why are you raising my taxes? And nobody complains when they go down, but if we can kind of smooth that out, and to do that, we need to have this strategic plan in place. So, what I, the reason I want to run again is because I really like that approach and I want to help support that approach as a board member. I think that we need to get collaboration between lots of different people, board members, community members, union members, and different groups that we have, and, you know, take a look at where we want to go as a school district over the next 10 to 15 years, where do we want to be, and start planning out. Now, I don't think you can plan out 15 years, but you can plan out maybe three to five years and then kind of establish some projected expenses. For instance, I would like to see some sort of a boiler rotation plan. We know how many boilers we have. We know what the life expectancy of those things are, so it shouldn't be a surprise when all of a sudden, you know, we have a boiler that needs to be replaced. And it shouldn't be a crisis. That should, you know, we should be seeing that coming down the road and we should be planning for it. And that would keep that tax levy, I think, a little more level.
If Scott Walker doesn't tip the apple cart, I mean, you could have all of the strategic plans in the world, but if he can sort of come in and say, what do you have, 60%, 61%?
Well, I think we're down to around 60% right now.
What if he does 55%? I mean, he's not a friend of public education. You guys know that better than I do.
Right. And, you know, then it's going to, it's going to be rough. And, but, I mean, you know, part of that planning then is you plan with the resources you have, and we're going to have to make some hard decisions.
Yeah. I think you will.
And I would echo the need for the strategic planning and, you know, making another serious attempt of trying to have the community come together to give us a sense of, or, you know, come to some sort of agreement on what's really important. What do we, what do we really want our school district to look like going into the future? And make some decisions about what's really important and what's not.
Can you give us a couple of examples of what you think is important and what isn't important?
Maintaining high-quality classroom teachers at a reasonable student-teacher ratio, I think, is...
Number one.
Number one, absolutely.
I think you need to protect your core academic programs, and that, you know, includes having good teachers. But, you know, until we see what the cuts look like, you know, it's hard to really have this discussion because we don't know how much has to go, but...
You've got one more year on, the second year of Doyle's second biennial budget, so the Walker damage, if it's going to come, would not come for a year. Is that correct? You're going to run one more year?
Right. Yeah, the budget we just passed.
Right. But, I mean, the state budget is going to stay in place for one more year. Then he will come in with a new biennial budget a year from now. So, we don't know what that will be, but the indications are not really favorable.
Yeah, we hope he gives us some signals.
Yeah. Well, he already has, doesn't he?
Yeah, he has.
I mean, they're like, well...
Yeah. But some clear signals, you know, benchmarks and numbers that we might be able to expect.
You know it's going down.
Yeah, that much we know.
Yeah.
Well, so with that knowledge, are you starting to try to, and I know it's hard because you don't know any great specifics, but you don't know any specifics at all yet, but are you trying to come up with some kind of a contingency plan, sort of playing the what-if game?
Well, I think that's part of the strategic plan. I mean, you know, the whole ballgame changed, you know, with this election. I mean, so, right now, we're going to have to, you know, begin to look at all these different components and start to, as Tom's saying, prioritize what's the most important things. And then we'll see where the cut comes when we know. But I think, you know, we can plan that much at least. And I know Don Vigot is anxious to get this started.
Okay. Tom, you had mentioned maintaining, you know, a quality teacher base. Certainly, that's important along with, you know, quality core programs and so forth. Teacher contracts have recently been settled. There have been some other contracts that have been settled. Maybe you can just kind of recap for us a little bit what's been settled and, you know, the general gist of what those settlement agreements were, and what's still outstanding?
Well, the food service unit, one of our smaller units, settled. And I, you know, I'm just going from my memory in terms of, I think, I think the wage increases were 2% to 2.5%, I think, on that. And food service is a standalone budget, you know, within the school district. And then we've settled with the Oshkosh Education Association, the teachers' union, and we're still out negotiating with the paraprofessionals and the Non Teaching Education Association, which is custodians, maintenance people, and some secretaries. So, those two are still outstanding.
Near finishing, or?
Well...
I mean, are you negotiating with them now?
Oh, yeah, sure. As a matter of fact, we just met with the OPEA today.
Okay.
So, yeah, those negotiations are ongoing.
All right, good.
Well, one of the things with regard to the teachers', you know, benefit package was the inclusion of coverage for domestic partners. You know, I didn't see that meeting, but I certainly heard enough about it, and Dan, you did see it. But, you know, former school board member and former Oshkosh Common Council member, Dennis McHugh, made some pretty outrageous comments, I think, and I was glad that you shut him down. But, you know, it seems like...
He didn't shut him down.
It seems like, well, you didn't shut him down...
I rebutted him.
...sooner than he probably should have been. But, I mean, you did rebut him, and you were visibly upset by that. But, you know, shouldn't you have maybe stopped him early on?
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, you never know what someone's going to say until they say it. But I guess my philosophy isn't, you know, in terms of freedom of speech, you should allow someone to say what they want to say. You can strongly disagree with it, but I think just because I disagree with it doesn't mean I shouldn't let them say it. I, you know, I felt though that I needed to say something at the end to sort of counter what he was saying. I feel strongly about, you know, people having equal rights in our society. And like I said, if we, you know, that night, if we take away rights from one group, where do we stop?
I guess my concern about that, and maybe you guys know the policy, you let him interrogate and question your board members. Isn't that against your policy?
Well, actually, well, it's a turn...
And you know what I mean. I mean, you were asked, he said, I want, and I thought he could only come and give testimony. He cannot ask questions of the board.
Someone gave me a copy of the statute on that, and apparently, it is allowable by state law for there to be exchange between board members and guests, I guess. But there are some limits if it's a non-agenda-related item.
Right. If it's a non-agenda-related item, you're not allowed to enter into that sort of discussion because it hasn't been noticed and members of the public might be interested.
There can be no discussion as a result.
Exactly.
Between board members.
Yeah.
Or with members of the public, I think. With respect to agenda items, though, and I think that's where we had some additional clarification, for an agenda item that has been noticed, then, you know, the public's been apprised that this is an item that's going to be discussed, and to the extent that a member of the public comes up and engages you in a dialogue or asks specific questions, then it was clarified that we are permitted, board members are permitted to discuss those things, as long as it's an agenda item that's been noticed.
Even if the questions are derogatory and uncivil and accusatory, don't you, as board president, want to set a better tone for someone like, McHugh was just way off-base. He was way off-base on his initial comments. He was way off on the questions, almost an interrogation.
Inappropriate.
Yeah. Shouldn't you, as board member, say, you know, gee, you know, I mean, we'll take some questions, but, you know, this board deserves some civility in your questions, don't you think?
Well, I mean...
I mean, free speech has limits.
Yeah. I mean, you know, he, obviously, what he was saying was, I think, basically, the kernel of his argument was that we're taking instructional dollars away from children to give health benefits to, I guess he said, gays and lesbians, I think, were the board's...
And they didn't deserve to live in Oshkosh.
Did he say that?
No, he was, well...
I don't remember him saying that.
He didn't say that specifically. He was talking, it was a different comment directed to someone at the table, as I recall.
You don't belong here, you shouldn't be here.
If, I think it was directed at someone sitting at the table, not at any particular other group of people.
I took it based on what I read in the paper.
I don't recall him saying that. And my feeling was, well, I'm going to try to demonstrate what I think is the way that people should conduct themselves and behave, and I tried to answer respectfully.
Oh, you were very diplomatic in answering, but...
Which is the way I think people should behave.
Sure.
And so, that's what I'm going to do.
Okay. All right. Can I go one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
A couple of months ago, you let the police interrupt your meeting for 45 minutes to interrogate one of your board members. Why would you give up a public meeting of a legal board that's been in order to allow them to come in and do that?
Well, the police apologized for that. We did not know what was going on. I mean, I had handed to me a note that said, during the next break, I think it was, the police are here and they need to see a board member. Now, I didn't know what was the issue, was, someone could have been in a car accident and seriously injured, or who knows what. Now, it turned out to be some bogus internet thing.
Yeah, we all know, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, when you get the note, you don't know.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, waited until we were done with whatever the discussion item was, an agenda item, and we voted on that. And I said, look, I've got a note from the police, I need to take a break here. I had no idea how long it was going to be when I did that as well.
Would you let a policeman pull a student out of your class if you were teaching a class?
Well, to come to John's defense, that's a different issue. Again, John was trying to explain that we didn't know what the issue was, and it could well have been a matter where some family member of one of the board members was, you know, had been in an accident. We didn't know what it was.
Yeah, okay, yeah. But police clearly were off-base and apologized within 24 hours.
They did, yeah, right. They said they shouldn't have done that.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, I think that was my very first meeting as president.
Interesting.
What an initiation.
Right. And it was also, they had board members' first meeting too, I think, so I was like...
He lies and laughs, man. What am I doing here?
Well, you get that out of the way right up front.
Yeah, well, you guys did, yeah.
Going back to school funding and so forth, we touched on that just a little bit before, but final school funding numbers from the state show that our district will get about $332,000 less than first projected, and to kind of make up that difference, you guys have decided to not replace as many computers this year. You know, I don't know specifically what these computers that aren't being replaced are being used for, if they're for instructional purposes or they're something else. But if they're for instructional purposes, I don't know, since technology is such a huge thrust of where we would like to see our students go and our job creations go in that direction, was there maybe some other place where the cuts could have been made? Or are these computers not for instructional purposes?
Well, it was the, actually, it was at the suggestion of administration that that was an area where, and it's not that we're not replacing any computers. I mean, there are computers that are going to be replaced.
Right, you're just not as replacing as many.
And they suggested that this might be an area where we can perhaps slow down a little bit, and then, you know, working throughout the school year, if there are other areas where we can figure out ways to save part of the budget in other areas, we'll come back to you and say, you know, we have these funds that we aren't going to be spending in this area, we'd like to shift them back to computers.
Sure.
But given the sort of the short timeframe that we were working with, I thought that was a reasonable approach.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I think those were under looming needs, not immediate needs.
Correct.
So, it wasn't like they were immediate needs on the list. But, again, back to the strategic plan, I'm kind of okay with this because one of the pillars of the strategic plan is technology, and we are putting in a lot of infrastructure right now and bringing our infrastructure up to where we need to have it in order to really get our district where we want it to be. And, you know, I'm not sure yet if computers are the way we want to go. We may want to have smaller types of things that are coming out now rather than computers. There's all sorts of little things that are out there.
Things like iPads or iTouchers or something along those lines.
Yeah, exactly. They're cheaper than computers and can do basically the same thing.
The new Congress wants to eliminate the U.S. Department of Education. What does the U.S. Department of Education do for a local school district, and could you get along without them?
Well...
Well, I'm sure we could manage to. We can manage to.
You can manage it. It's in the strategic plan to not get in the...
Well, I've always, I thought it's always interesting because I don't think the U.S. Constitution has any...
The word "education" is out in the Constitution.
Yeah, so they've kind of allotted that to themselves extra constitutionally. So, in a sense, they really don't have a place, and it should be states, the states have the authority.
So, you kind of agree with the Tea Party people, maybe to knock off this $50 billion federal intrusion on local government?
But, you know, I understand, you know, where this all started. It started after Sputnik and the fact that the federal government was rightfully worried about the arms race and all that kind of stuff, and so they were able to put together some...
Actually, Department of Education, Energy were both established by Jimmy Carter. That was many years after Sputnik.
Yeah. But it all started back then when they wanted to start putting federal dollars into education because of the technology.
So, you don't, I mean, I know it's kind of a...
But, no, I mean, I welcome federal dollars. The strings attached to them, that bother me.
Would getting rid of DPI be better than getting rid of the U.S. Department of Education?
Oh...
They don't want to go there. We're so quickly running out of time.
Now, you're asking the wrong guy.
No, we're so quickly running out of time, and I want to touch on this before we are out of time. The school enrollment numbers have recently come out, and this district has lost a net of 91 students, roughly to the tune of about $618,000, a little bit above that. It's the largest exodus of students from Oshkosh since open enrollment was established in 1998. Now, this may be part of your strategic plan, but, you know, how concerned are you about this mass exodus, and what is being done to sort of prevent this type of mini hemorrhage, if you will, from occurring in the future?
Well, I think that will be part of the strategic plan, and, you know, in order to track students, we want to reverse that number. We want, we want this to be a destination school district, and I think that's, that's why we have our, you know, Don Vigot and his staff are laying out the strategic plan. How can we make this a destination school district? And, you know, that goes, you know, to a lot of things, quality of the teachers, I think, is number one. I think Tom would agree with me there. You know, our physical plants, our buildings, our programs, and, you know, it's going to be a tough haul for all of us now with the budget environment as it is, but everybody's in the same boat. So, you know, it's still a level playing field, and I think that, you know, we've got, I can't say enough good things about Don Vigot and the staff he's put together and central administration. I think they're going to make the school district a destination school district, and we haven't begun that, we've barely begun that conversation as to how we're going to do that, but they have the talent and the creativity and the ideas to do it. And like I said at the beginning, that's why I'm excited about running again, because I want to be a part of that.
Well, and I think the school board, you know, in its current makeup is a refreshing change also.
It's much more civil, John, and both of you, I think, have added to that as another trail comment, really.
Thank you.
With regard to the student, the open enrollment and the loss of these students, now, when students leave, do you guys, as a general rule or policy, sort of do an exit interview, if you will, to see why they've left? Because I think that information would be good to know in order to help stem this in the future.
Certainly, the school board doesn't. I think administration tries too much, but you, I mean, you can't...
Right, force them to.
Right, right.
...force someone to give you those answers.
I would think if someone's really upset, though, they'd be all too happy to share their, their concerns about why they've left, you know. But I just think it would be good information to have if you can, you can get it.
Okay.
All right. Anything real quick?
Charter schools, how many do we have in Oshkosh?
Oh, let me think. The number's changed. John probably, you know...
Well, we've got, let's see, there's Franklin...
Oh, Franklin, Alps.
Shapiro?
And Shapiro.
You were on it in the environmental?
Four, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Do they compete with regular schools?
No, they're part of the schools. But, I mean, like, for instance, Franklin, basically, the charter there is to, is to implement constructivist learning throughout the building, and that's sort of the cutting-edge learning model right now. And I think Shapiro is brain-based learning, which is sort of running in a parallel tra- And I think Shapiro is brain-based learning, which is sort of running in a parallel track. So, you know, the teachers there have agreed to take this on and...
Okay, all right, good. Well, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you both.
And I'm sure you're going to run again, so we'll be seeing you in a matter of months. The clock is going to quickly tick, and so that'll happen sooner than we think, and hopefully we'll see you again as well, so.
Thank you both for coming on.
I'm sure Dan's saving his tough questions for when I run again.
We're going to take a real short break, and when we come back, we'll be joined by outgoing Sheriff Mike Brooks and incoming Sheriff-elect, Captain John Motz. We'll be right back.
Every year, the U.S. Department of the Treasury receives about 1.4 million reports of problems with paper checks. Checks can be lost, stolen, or delayed. If you still receive social security payments by paper check, Treasury wants you to know about a safer, more convenient way to get your money: the Direct Express Prepaid Debit Mastercard. The Direct Express card is new and is available to anyone receiving social security benefits, even if you don't have a bank account. Your monthly benefits will be automatically placed onto your card account each month on the day your money is due. While other debit cards cost money, it is possible to use the Direct Express card for free to make purchases, pay bills, and get cash at thousands of locations nationwide. There are no sign-up or monthly account fees, no more waiting for the mail, or worrying about lost or stolen checks. Call 1-877-212-9991, or visit www.usdirectexpress.com.
And as promised, we're now joined by current Winnebago County Sheriff Mike Brooks, seated to my left, as, I probably didn't even have to say that, you've been here long enough, and folks know, yes, so. And the sheriff-elect is seated next to him, Captain John Motz. So, congratulations on your victory. It was pretty much a certainty, though, you were going to win. You were running unopposed.
Yes.
So I was even surprised to see yard signs. You were running unopposed, and yet, all of a sudden, I saw, I started seeing signs, and I thought, why does he have signs out? I mean, somebody would really have to mass a huge and very successful writing campaign to have defeated you, since your name was on the ballot.
Yeah, my committee suggested that we put out a few signs, so we put out a few hundred signs, and just for name recognition, and, you know, in case there was a media blitz with a writing candidate.
There's rumors that Lisa Murkowski has a relative in Oshkosh.
Okay, all right, well, you know, the one thing about running an unopposed race, of course, is we don't get to, you know, hear your views or your platforms on anything, or, you know, your thoughts on anything going on within your department. We don't get to know you either. I know you've been with the department for a while, but maybe you can just kind of give us a little idea, you know, what your background is, how long you've been with the department, and then we can talk about what you're going to do differently, if anything.
Sure. I have been with the sheriff's office for 21 years. I started out as a correctional officer. I worked as a correctional officer for about three and a half years, and then went to patrol, and was a patrolman for about six years, and then was promoted back to the jail as a sergeant, and worked in the jail for a few years as sergeant, and then promoted to patrol lieutenant, was in that position for a few years, and eventually promoted to patrol captain. I have been a SWAT team leader, been on specialty teams and a trainer for the agency for almost that entire career, and training is near and dear to me, as well as the tactical portion of it. Been in the military for 23 years, I retired once and then got back in, spent a tour in Iraq and returned in January.
Oh, okay, that's why your name sounds familiar to me.
Do you have a son that was serving over there, too?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay. Now I'm putting the pieces together here, yeah, when you said that. So why did you decide to go for the position of sheriff?
It's always been an aspiration of mine to lead the agency. You know, Mike has done a great job over the last 16 years, acted as a mentor to me, you know, even early on in my career, as well as the other supervisors that I've had, and I feel like I owe it to the agency, you know, to seek the position and eventually take the position. And again, it's been a goal of mine.
Sure. Well, you know, that was one of the questions I was going to ask, is you've worked not only under Mike Brooks for his entire term, but his predecessor, I can't think of his name.
Bob Kraus, Sheriff Bob Kraus.
That's right, yep, Bob Kraus. He was, I think, the sheriff when I first moved back to Oshkosh in 93. What kinds of things have you learned from your two predecessors, your soon-to-be predecessors?
Well, I, you know, I knew Bob more as a coworker, but not as a sheriff at that point because I was a correctional officer and then a patrol officer, so I didn't get into the supervisory part role until Mike was elected sheriff. But, you know, having Mike as a sheriff, I learned about fiscal responsibility, the personnel issues that we've dealt with, and the different contractual issues that we have, and a clear understanding of all of the things that go on at the sheriff's office, not just in the patrol division, not just in the jail division, but corrections, detectives, and have a real broad view of all of those divisions.
Okay.
Back to your war experience, what does that bring to the job that we might want to, and what did you learn over in Iraq that might be something that you can share with us and might be good for you as starting as sheriff?
Sure. You know, throughout my career in the military, I have had good leaders and bad leaders, and sometimes I think you take as much away from a bad leader as what you do from a good leader. So I experienced in that year, although I had 21 years of experience prior to that in the National Guard, but with that year, I saw so many different leaders and leadership styles, and saw good leaders and bad leaders, and took the good and the bad from each of those. We ran a theater internment facility, which is a prison, basically, and we had about 3,800 detainees, so dealing with that many people on that large of scale and all of the issues that go with that, I gained some very good insight. I was the non-commissioned officer in charge on our night shift, so a lot of the decisions were left up to me that dealt with those 3,800 detainees, and it was a great experience overall. It was very hot, very dirty, but overall, it was a good experience, and I gained a lot from it.
Can I ask you if you think we'll ever get out of Iraq?
I think personally that we will have a force there for quite some time, but I also believe that they have the economic means to support themselves, and it's just going to take a while to establish that government, just like it took us a while, I'm sure, to establish ours back in the early days, and, you know, once they can get through some of the infighting that's been going on for thousands of years, but start to straighten out that government and get it on the right track, and I think it's getting there, but it's just going to take some time.
Democriuses is a hard sell over there, isn't it?
It certainly is.
As a leader, as a manager, how will your management style differ from Mr. Brooks' style, Sheriff Brooks?
I know that, and one thing that I've learned, actually, throughout my career, and especially in Iraq, I think, was that until you make change, you need to get, you need to take that view from a different altitude, and before any of that change occurs, I will be in office for a couple of months and then look at it from where Sheriff Brooks was looking at it, because it might appear different, and I might want to adjust some of those changes. How will we differ? You know, I think we're both fiscally responsible. I think that there are some projects on the horizon that will require some very tough decisions. I think budgetarily, there's going to be some tough decisions, but, and I think that my career and Mike has prepared me to make those decisions.
Well, one of the biggest challenges might be, and it's going to hit you right out of the chute, and that's the jail expansion, you know, and you had to deal with that relatively early on, and, I mean, you had a few years behind you and under your belt before we had to start talking about the jail, although I think we were talking about that jail when you kind of came into office.
Thirteen months after I took office, we were talking about adding or building a new facility.
Yeah, and now, you know, as we were told back then, we're reaching that maximum capacity, and we have to, you know, we're faced with an expansion. You know, that, especially in today's economy, I mean, the jail itself was a very tough sell, the expansion's going to be a tough sell. How will you and the planners, the marketing team, whoever's, the architects, whoever's involved in this, how will you guys, because you're going to have to start selling this early on, how will you, if you know this soon, start to sell this, not only to the county board, but the constituency as a whole?
We have a criminal justice study that's underway. That study will not only tell us whether or not we need a jail expansion and when that might be, but what programs are we using now that we can enhance, what programs aren't we using now as alternatives to incarceration? So maybe that study's going to tell us that we have a little more time than we had thought prior to. Maybe it's going to tell us that there's this other program out here that you're not using, and it might be right for your agency or for your county. So until we get that study back, I think it's a little premature to say that there's going to be a jail expansion in the very, very near future. Probably in our future, there's going to be one, and I think that just is part of society. We want to hold people responsible for what they do, and part of that is having a jail capacity to manage those people. And when it comes right down to it, that really is the bottom line. Do we want to hold people accountable and have a safe and secure place for them to be and hold them accountable? What other alternatives are? If we've looked at every other alternative to incarceration and we're using it to its utmost, what other options do we have?
Do you think we are? Because I know Sheriff Brooks has done a lot of things very creatively to try and hold down costs and use alternatives to incarceration, but at the end of the day, there is only so much you can do. Do you think we've exhausted those possibilities? Are there other things that we could be doing?
You know, I'm not sure. I know that we have Day Report being used on a daily basis, we have our GPS program, where we have people out on the bracelet program, we still have Hubers, and, you know, beyond that, what else is there? And I'm looking for that study to tell us those things.
Is a consolidation of the three-county jail off the table?
Yes, it is.
It is, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, another one, is my understanding is, is there a study going on about consolidating 911 services for the three counties? Could you tell us where you're at on that and what you think about that?
Sure.
Okay?
Well...
Or both of you.
Let me just start by saying, this has been a topic of conversation amongst the sheriffs for quite some time, and I've always felt that, well, let me take a step back, in facing tight budget times, you need to find creative ways to deal with it, and I wish I could say a consolidation is creative, but it's not. It just makes good sense in this respect. Laying off people reduces your budget, but it also diminishes your service that you provide. Consolidation creates that, or continues that good service, but it also does it in a way that reduces the annual cost, and it reduces annual costs as it relates to labor, which is by far the fastest-growing cost. Excuse me, I had, and I think John can follow up on a lot more than I can, in our succession planning here, which you don't get to do very often, John has started to take over the role that I previously had and has been going to the meetings.
So you can kind of, where is it at?
Oh, we will be hiring a consultant to look at the feasibility of creating that public safety answering point or the combined dispatch, and there may be some other cost savings that we didn't initially think about, but if we have one dispatch center, we're only equipping that dispatch center with maybe 14 councils versus having eight councils in Outagami, eight in Winnebago, and five in Calumet. It reduces the cost of the radio system and the infrastructure of that system.
Calls might not become as responsive, may not be as quick when you have less...
No, what I mean by that is that the dispatch center, wherever it's at, whatever county it's in, when that radio infrastructure is placed in there, because we're looking at a new radio system as well. It's antiquated, it's, parts of it are over 30 years old, and with the new federal guidelines, we do have to do something with our radio system, and the infrastructure's going to be replaced. So when we replace that, instead of replacing it at three dispatch centers, we only replace it at one, which will reduce the cost of the infrastructure as well as the operating cost, because you can, you get by with less employees.
Would the Uber center in town be a good place for this?
It's possible. That's part of the consultants.
Okay. All right, I'll just throw it out.
And John alluded to, and maybe just to add to this, it's not only the labor cost savings, but the infrastructure, as he talked about, and the easiest way for us to explain that to you is, the first council that you buy is the most expensive council, and the reason is because all the radio equipment in your equipment room is needed for one council. When you add extra councils on, they're less cost. It doesn't cost the same as that first one. Think about having that first council in Winnebago County, that first council in Outagami, and that first council in Calumet. That's a huge, huge cost.
So you're going to get one of the most expensive items?
Right.
Well, before we, you know, I know we've got some time left, but I don't want to run out of time without having ample time to talk to you.
Yes.
You know, you have been a guest on this show many, many times during this show's existence, which is now in its ninth year, and I've always enjoyed having you on.
Thank you.
And I know on one of the past shows, you talked about why you were not seeking reelection, why you were retiring from the sheriff's department. Too late to change your mind now, we've got our sheriff-elect.
That's right.
But why now? And, you know, why did you make this decision at this time?
Well, you know, I can really, I mean, I could probably spend this show and a couple more shows talking about it, but really, here's the easiest way.
Is that a hint to come back? Again, before your term is up?
Well, no, that's not where I was going, but first of all, I've been at the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office for 38 years, and to be quite frank with you, that's a long time. I'm 60 years old now, I'd like to try and do a couple other things. We have a new grandchild, so I plan on, yeah, thank you, I plan on spending a lot of time in Cincinnati, visiting my new grandchild, but more importantly, I believe change is important for all of us. I do need a change, but I also believe that the sheriff's office is going to benefit by having a new change. And John has been way too kind about some of the things he said. There, you know, there's always going to be some differences, but this is a young man that has come in, he has prepared himself, he has been successful at everything he's done, he was successful in the, or is successful in the military. This is a very capable young man, and there will be some changes from my tenure, and that's to be expected, but I guess I feel very comfortable that Winnebago County Sheriff's Office is in good hands under his tenure. So change is good, and that's the main reason.
And when is your term actually up?
January 2nd. All state and county and city, well, actually, none of the cities, but state and county that run under partisan, they take over the very first Monday in January. So January 2nd is, which ironically is the, was the first day of my term in 1995.
Wow, what a coincidence.
Yes, yes.
So as of January 2nd, you will be the new sheriff. And so other than spending time with the new grandchild, what are your plans?
Well, I've got a couple of options, and I really don't want to talk too much about one of them, but I've also talked to some people that do consulting, and not that I want to be a consultant, but I would be very interested in doing background investigations for agencies, you know, or for consulting firms that are doing job search for an agency or for a business. So I'd be very interested in that. I guess I would like to look at staying somewhat involved in law enforcement. I truly love the law, and I'm not talking about the statutes, I'm talking about case law, the court's decisions and how they get, I really, really love that and have always enjoyed that, so somehow I'd like to stay involved in that.
That's kind of a little bit on the same order as what former Sheriff Bob Kraus did prior to his passing. Didn't he go into private investigation or something?
He did legal service, or serving legal papers, and he did private investigations, and I'm not interested in, I don't want to get involved in doing divorce, private investigations or accident private investigations.
You don't want to do stakeouts and things like that.
No, 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 but I would like to, excuse me, I would like to do something that still keeps me involved in the legal system.
Sure. As you look back over your time in office, Sheriff, what, you know, what do you see as your, some of your crowning achievements?
Well, you know, depending on who you talk to, there are people that will say, "I'll always be remembered for the jail," and... And, you know, I'm sure that I will be, but I, by no stretch of the imagination, is that the thing I'm the most proud of. What I'm the most proud of is really come to great fruition under Captain Motz, and that is a recognition that crime prevention and community policing in a sheriff's office needs to be expanded and developed beyond what it was years ago. And so it's the fact that I've fostered that, and the fact that, and I'll say it again, John just did a fabulous job in patrol and really working in the community policing, working community policing in the patrol. So that, to me, is probably the most important thing that I've seen or been a part of with the sheriff's office.
Conversely, what about any regrets? Anything that you wish you hadn't done, or maybe you would have done a little differently if we, as adults, lived in a world of do-overs like we can as kids with games?
Yes, yes. You know, interestingly, I have a, when I'm convinced that something's right, I sometimes am a little bit like a bull in a china shop. And if I could redo anything, it would be maybe becoming a little more tactful in how I approach some things. There was a couple of different programs that we tried that, you know, I thought for sure they were going to work out well, and I wish I could change those. And as to the building of the new sheriff's office, we had a core staff that did a wonderful job. And I'm very proud of the job they did. That building came in $3 million, under what the estimate was going to be. The one mistake in that facility was a decision that I made as it relates to how a housing unit looked. And in retrospect, that is, you know, is probably one of the mistakes, one of the things that I should have not stuck my nose into. I should have let the staff continue that. So that would probably sum up some of the problems.
Okay.
I called some of the supervisors. They don't want to use their name. Here are some of the things they said were your legacy. You instilled a great pride in the department. You're well-respected. And the thing that they really gave you kudos was the budget where there was an $800,000 shortfall, and you took the hit for it. It wasn't your mistake, but by God, you stood up and you took it. And they, those old supervisors, the ones that, they said, you know, for Mike Brooks, that's something that we're going to remember.
As President Truman said, the buck stops here. And it was my responsibility.
The last thing is, you did, reading the Declaration of Independence.
Yes.
And we want to make a little plea that John would continue that. We'll talk more later, but it was a wonderful thing. The sheriff was, in colonial times, the person who did this. He did a wonderful job, and we hope he'll consider, as you become sheriff in the years that have, that you might continue that tradition. And we're very appreciative, Mike, for you doing that.
It was an honor.
Okay.
Did you, and I don't recall, did you do it in your sheriff's uniform, or did you get an old-fashioned uniform like we had talked about when you were on the show?
I had one person call me. I had an individual from here that brought it up, and then I had another person that called me. I went to that person's, and I hate to admit that I couldn't fit into it. So I wore my sheriff's, my uniform.
Well, now, you've got lots of time. You've got lots of lead time.
We'll get him whatever he wants, right?
To find a proper uniform.
Or get him an exercise.
Did you have anything else?
No, but those were some of the comments. I just wanted to share those.
Those were some nice comments, though.
Yeah, I appreciate it. You know, the last thing I want to say, too, you know, it's real easy to be out in front of an organization that is as filled with quality people as what we have. John is just a classic example. And I think one of the things that, you know, some people say, well, why, you know, why didn't anybody run? And I think, you know, in large part, you have to take a look at his involvement in the community, his involvement with the military. This is a guy that is not only serving his community on a day-to-day basis, be in Winnebago County, but he served his community in the armed forces. I think there are a lot of people that have a tremendous amount of respect for him and said, this is a guy that will leave the sheriff's office into the next decade and do a wonderful job. And I really do believe that's why nobody ran.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's a testament to what you've done, like Sheriff was saying. So what kinds of advice or pearls of wisdom will you pass on to your successor here as he takes the reins in a few months?
Well, I think he's probably sick of hearing me say, at the end of the day, you have to sleep at night. You make your decisions based on that, and you'll do well. But I think he's probably a little sick of me saying that.
Don't take your job home with you at night, is what you're saying.
Well, I think when you make decisions, you know, there's always more than one way to skin this cat. But ultimately, some of these decisions John's going to have to make, and, you know, it's not always going to make everybody happy, but he's the one that has to answer the taxpayers. He's the one that has to sleep at night. And, you know, and maybe that seems obvious, and I'm sure he's tired of hearing me say that, but that's, I've said that, if I've said it to him once, probably 30 times at least, so.
Any advice on dealing with the supervisors of your years' experience?
Well, let me say, I watched him at the county board budget hearing. He did a wonderful job. He was extremely well-prepared with his budget. That's one of the advantages to not having somebody run against him. He was able to build his own budget for 2011. He was very knowledgeable about that budget, was able to answer questions when there were, during an amendment when there was a lot of questions and it got somewhat heated, he maintained his composure. He did everything he needs to do in working with him, starting from being well-prepared and the plan was well-thought-out.
Okay. There you go. How was his golf game?
I just asked him that.
Not so good. I moved sod.
We'll give you a license.
I moved sod, too.
But do you put it back? Do you replace your divots?
Find it.
You know, it's okay to move the sod, but you've got to replace it. That's the important thing. Well, you know, I said before that we've had a really good relationship with Sheriff Brooks over these years, and I feel very honored to have been someone that you've reposed so much trust in over the years. And we've got a mutual respect, and I hope that that will, you know, transfer over to your tenure and your administration as well. What other things can we look forward to? How receptive will you be to the public? Because you're not just a lawman now. Now you're an elected official responsible to those folks.
You know, I think it's very important to get involved in the community, to be involved in community events. An adjunct member on the Boys and Girls Club, want to continue that, that part of mentorship. And, you know, being involved in the public and getting their input is very important, because that's the people that we serve.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much, and best of luck to you. And Sheriff, you know, thank you so much for everything you've done for our community, our county, and for all the wonderful times you've shared with us on this show.
Thank you. It's been, it really has been an honor. As I said to John, there's only one, we are, excuse me, there's only 72 sheriffs. I've had the great opportunity to be one of those 72, and you don't get there if the community doesn't support you, so it's been a great honor. And I appreciate, as I told John, I've always enjoyed coming on here. You ask very legitimate questions and, excuse me, and it's an opportunity for us to tell the community what we're doing so they know that we're doing our job.
Sure. And we've always, I think, tried to be very, very fair.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
And best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And we'll be talking.
You booked him again, huh?
Absolutely. And if you have a reason to come back, we'll have you back, too.
Thank you.
That's going to do it for us. We will see you next time. Until then, take good care. Keep your eye on us. We've got all right on Oshkosh.